I stay because someone stayed for me. I've had good teachers who have poured into me during my toughest times at high school and even after high school. So I stay because I want the students to be able to make a connection with me.
I want to have an impact. I want to impact kids' lives and make a difference in them for their education, but also in everyday life, somebody to care about them.
The teaching staff that was here when I was a student here, they leaned into me and, you know, my home situation when I was a kid, and helped me as a mentor and led me to go to college, go to the military. And I think having those good leaders before me has developed me into the leader I am now.
Make a difference, make it Dayton Public Schools.
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 I'm here today.
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 Are you?
Are you?
Are you?
At DPS, attendance is important. That's why we're challenging all schools to increase and improve their daily attendance. So I ask again, we're here today. Are you?
Are you?
First off, Mr. Bornhorst. Mr. Bornhorst, we appreciate you, you know, all the work that you have done. I had the pleasure of working with you for five years. You have been consistent, you know. The small jokes that you make that I gotta listen to and say, well, is that a joke, Mr. Bornhorst? But again, the compliments that was given. You got to see our culture change. You were very uplifting in letting my staff and I know that, you know, Meadowdale's in good hands. So again, we wish you the best of luck in what you're about to do next. Because again, I know you're still young, so you still got a lot of life to live. So we are looking forward to, you know, hearing great things with your traveling. So thank you again, and the Lions, you will always have a place here at the Lions Den.
A special thank you to Tim Dunaway for the fabulous job he did here at International School. You're one of a kind, and it's been amazing to have you here working with us.
I wanted to say a special congratulations to our three retiring custodians. Pat Eichenlapp from Valerie, Ms. E. Elvina McNair from Westwood, and Joyce Parks from Fairview. We are so going to miss you, but are so excited you get to have another opportunity to do whatever you want to do. We're gonna miss you, we're proud of you, and thanks for all you've done for us.
Ms. Love, your impact on Ruskin School was absolutely profound. The joy you brought into this building was infectious and noticed by everybody every day that you were here. The legacy of love that you have left here at Ruskin will be remembered by students and teachers, anybody who ever came to Ruskin, for years and years to come. Thank you, happy retirement.
Monica Noss, aka Catwoman, aka Snoop, aka Gigi TuTu. It's a bunch of just names that we give Mrs. Noss. Tinker Bell, you know, I'm gonna miss Tinker Bell walking around the classroom, walking around the hallway, doing her little pizzy dutch. And then she'll start dancing when you know she's tired and she's ready to go, okay? But this has been my partner. Ms. Noss and I have been working with each other for four years closely, you know, day in, day out sometimes. We got so many good stories, we got laughs, we've cried. It has been a journey. I can't say enough about Mrs. Noss. I'll be taking up so much time to talk about and the depth of who Mrs. Noss is. You know, we've been in the trenches, fighting in wars, you know, here, not with each other. And that's been the biggest blessing, we didn't fight against each other. But we grew together, been through things, and we have been able to see the transformation of Meadowdale in the manner that we want it. And we're gonna continue to keep pushing, because I know you're retiring, but I gotta keep you around somehow. So we just gonna say bye for now, but not for long. So congratulations to all of the mighty Lions that will always be accepted here, will always be a part of the Lion family here at the Lions Den. Can't do it without you, and I'm not supposed to, so thank you all, I love you. Karen Schiller, who I was first introduced to her as my own personal French teacher when I was in high school here at Meadowdale, and it was Ms. Shahada. So it also was a pleasure, not only to just be in your classroom, you know, many years ago, we're not gonna say how many years ago, but many years ago, but now to come back to the Lions Den as your administrator and to also, you know, work with you and offer my expertise and tips and also continue to listen to the stories that you bring and kind of took me back to when I was, you know, in high school. And I would hear your stories and hear you, you know, speak in French. And I think it's "bon voyage"? I don't know, but that "bon voyage"? Anybody know French in here? So I wish you the best of luck as well, Mrs. Schiller. It has been a pleasure, and I hope that you and your daughter continue to keep traveling and enjoying life. You have been awesome, you know, over your long tenure in the classroom. Can't thank you enough. All your artwork, I'm gonna remember, you know, walking to the classroom, the drawings that you inspire kids to do. So again, thank you, and bon voyage.
To Eric Von Berg, thank you, congratulations. I know you've had so many students that you've made a difference in their lives. Have a wonderful retirement. Congratulations and thank you, Dana darling. You've had an amazing teaching career. Additionally, you have hired hundreds of teachers for the district. It doesn't stop with hiring. You have supported teachers and administrators in renewing their license and solving other issues. Your hard work for the HR department will continue to influence the district for decades to come. Congratulations, enjoy your retirement.
Mrs. Hickey, I don't even know where to begin thanking you for your professionalism, dedication, and commitment to our students. Your impact on the students at Ruskin has been profound. Your leadership has been a model of what we do here at Ruskin. You know you are always a lifetime Ram. Please don't be a stranger, come back and visit. Good evening retirees and guests. What a wonderful evening. We're glad you guys could all gather here together. We are happy to celebrate this milestone in your lives. The impact you've had on all the students that you've interacted with in Dayton Public Schools has been profound. And your names will be remembered forever by the students that you worked with. We are proud to have served with you and worked with you and wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
Wanted to say congratulations to all of the retirees, especially those in operations this year. Thank you for all of your hard work, dedication to Dayton Public Schools, wishing you nothing but success in whatever you decide to do after that.
Congratulations to all the retirees. Thank you so much for all you've done to help the students of Dayton Public Schools. It really makes a difference.
Congratulations to all the Dayton Public Schools retirees for all the hard work that you have done over the years. We appreciate you. We know it's been challenging. What we do is ever-changing, but at the same time, it's very rewarding. So congratulations to you. We wish you the best of luck as you continue on with your life, and we hope that you do a lot of traveling and enjoying it. Thank you.
The message I have for them is, I'm gonna miss you. This has been a journey for you. I don't know exactly how many years it's been, but if you've been with Dayton Public Schools and you're retiring, I am wishing you well. And I want you to come back and volunteer. I want you to wish us well on social media. And I want you to stay connected to the district, because you're always gonna be part of the family. I hope that you took away that you were so valuable in the lives of children. Whatever your job was, you were valuable to children and to this operation that we know is Dayton Public Schools and to the community. Children are our most prized assets. So you were part of building those children who would then become productive adults. I want you to know your work mattered. So your impact as an employee, if you were a teacher, of course, people always think teachers, and teachers, you are important. But if you were custodian, you were amazing at making sure kids had the environment that was clean. If you were a transportation specialist or bus driver, you were amazing at making sure they got the extracurricular activities and got to school and got home. If you were the secretary, you were so important to our five Cs, customer service. You were the first voice, first face they saw when they walked in. Whatever your role was, from custodian to secretary to transportation to parent professional, to operations who make sure that things are working inside the building, all of those roles are super important. And of course, being a former principal, if you're an administrator or a principal, your role is important as well. Listen, this is a really important date. I want you to know that I'm close to this too. This is year 30, so sure enough, at some point, I'll be on the other side and saying my goodbyes to Dayton Public Schools.
Hi, I'm Kristin, and this is Jay. We are from Wave Foundation. We're housed at Newport Aquarium. And we're here with our African penguin friend Randy today. And we came out to the school to teach the kids about African penguins and different animals that are endangered and how we can take care of them.
Hello, my name is Molly. And this school is called VHS Monastery School. And the show that you are watching is called A Kindergarten.
Eggs and the Kindergartener. Okay, so what's your name?
What's your name?
What's your name?
Miriam.
What's your name?
Doten.
Doten?
Yes.
So what's your favorite animal, Ashad?
Lion.
What's your favorite animal, Miriam?
I like elephants.
What's your favorite animal?
A lion.
What's your favorite cartoon, Ashad?
Cartoon?
Yes. All right, let's move on. What's your favorite cartoon?
Superman!
Hey, why? Super kitties. Super kitties. Why? I like that. What's your favorite?
Spiderman.
All right. What's your favorite comic book? What's your favorite comic book? Spiderman! What's your favorite comic book? Daddy Show? Okay. Comic book? No, I don't got one. All right, what's your favorite comic book? I don't have one. What's your favorite comic book? I have... And that's perfectly fine, Miriam. I have... That's perfectly fine. I have a dinosaur one. Dinosaur? They're not a comic book! I don't have one! Who likes dinosaurs? Raise your hand! Oh, I don't have one. What's your favorite book if you don't have a comic book? A comic book? No, it's a book, like books, not a comic book. A book! Okay. I Spiderman one. What's your favorite book?
Are you scared? No, no, you're scared.
Is that the one that's right there?
No, that's that one right there with the bunny and the bear.
Oh, that's my favorite. That's my favorite. Okay, let's go outside, everybody. So let's move on. What's your favorite book?
A dinosaur.
Why does it always have to be dinosaurs? Because I like dinosaurs! What's your favorite food? No! No, not real. No! I'm first! No, you're not. I get to choose you first. I know you ain't about to talk back to me, lady. Oh. I will call you old man if you don't stop calling me old lady. Did you just call me old man? So, okay, let's move on. What's your favorite movie?
Um... Spiderman.
What's your favorite movie? Dinosaur! Why do we always got dinosaurs? That is a movie! Wait, there's nothing movies are like dinosaurs! That's a cartoon. Because I like dinosaurs! Dinosaur's is not a movie. Yes, it is! No, it isn't! Let's move on! Okay, I'm running downstairs. Thanks for watching, as in kindergarten. Make sure you subscribe.
What time is it? Three, two, one. Yeah!
So Liddy Summer Camp program is all about STEM-based projects and different modulators. So the kids are faced with different scientific challenges and different topics focusing on the engineering design program and the scientific method.
Three, two, one.
It's not like regular school, so that's what makes it engaging. The challenges that the kids have throughout the different modules also make it engaging as well. But it's more so, I'm coming, learning throughout the summer, but I'm having fun throughout the summer as well.
I really liked that they let you use your creativity and kind of make you feel special. They let you kind of do your own thing. They give you instructions, but they let you mostly follow your own path.
I liked that they gave us challenges that I'm able to handle. And I really love designing things.
You have to see presentation is good like always. I saw him at the Victoria Theater, and his was good too. So he's just doing the same things, and I like his things. I like to see it every time they come here. It's good.
I like that it's fun. He learned a lot of stuff, like science math, reading, and like the science experiment with his dad, it was really cool.
Parents or others may think, oh, it's summertime, so learning stops. Learning never stops. So as they continue to come to the program, you know, it's just enriching them and inspiring them to want to be adventurers and inspiring them to continue to work with others and collaborate with others. So I do think that this program should continue to be going. That's why this is my third year coming, because again, I'm having fun too with it. Side ears right next to them. DBs right here next to them. Hey, everybody understand that. Get the work, get the work, hey, hey, get the break. Hey, hard work on three. Hard work on me, one for three, one for three.
All right, hey, get out of here, get out of here.
We hear you, Belmont!
We hear your commitment to learning, and we're here to extend the challenge. That's why we're asking every student, family, and staff member to be present and be engaged.
When we show up, we build a foundation here. And when we show up, we build a future.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
We are here today!
We believe in the power of showing up.
So we're here today. Are you?
Are you?
And now called to order this July 27th special meeting. Madam Treasurer, may we have a roll call?
President Goodwin?
Here.
Dr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Lacy?
He has an excused absence.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Ms. Reiner?
Present.
Mr. Walker?
Present.
Ms. Wick?
Present.
Six present.
Please stand for the pleasure of allegiance. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our mission is to inspire, educate, and empower. Our vision is to inspire, educate, and empower scholars for a lasting impact. And our purpose is to cultivate a supportive and engaging educational experience. Do we have any bargaining union scheduled to speak or here to speak today? I do not see any. Let me see who's walking through the door. Okay, Madam Treasurer, do we have anyone registered to speak from the public?
No.
All right. Associate Superintendent Minor, your first recommendation.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Goodwin. We would like to... Thank you. Good morning, and yes, we do, we would like to recommend approval of the following: B, administrative; C, certified; D, classified; E, classified exempt; F, supplemental; and G, athletic supplemental appointments at this time.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Wick, second by Dr. Bailey. Any questions on the motion?
Uh, give me a second. On the SRO one, I thought we did this one already. I was trying to find it.
For F supplemental, F-47?
Uh, no, this one was the voluntary termination one. It has a date of 2024, but I thought that we did this one before already.
Which number are you looking at, Mr. Walker?
Should be classified D-1.
I don't know if it's on there, it means we haven't board approved it, so if they're asking for it, we'll just give them their piece. Ms. Mickey, question for you real quick. On item D-1, since this is from 2024, is there a reason why we're seeing it today? Thank you.
Good morning. This one was brought to us as a resignation that never saw board action. We looked, we didn't see board action for it, so we're trying to remedy that so that there's an action for the resignation.
Is it a resignation or a termination?
I'm sorry, it's a voluntary termination. My apologies.
Okay.
Yep. We did speak with Chief Wright regarding the volunteer termination. I guess this employee didn't show back up to work. It was supposed to be board approved back in 2024, and 2024 just never happened.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, maybe have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
A quick question, I'm going for all of these at once?
Yes.
All right, abstain.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Five yeses, one abstain.
Thank you, your next recommendation? Item H.
Yes, I recommend the approval of the following DEA after July 10th for vote.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Dr. Bailey. Any questions? Seeing none, maybe have a vote.
President Goodwin?
No.
Dr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Reiner?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
No.
Five no, one yes.
Thank you, Associate Superintendent Minor. Madam Treasurer, your first recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the following:
I recommend the approval of the following. B, physical year 2026 property tax insurances. C, permanent certificate of estimated resources. D, permanent appropriation measure for physical year 2025. E, temporary advance. F, permanent transfer. G, resolution to use Dayton Foundation account.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Wick, second by Ms. Reiner. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Wick, second by Mr. Walker. Maybe have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Let the record show that I got the quickest meeting ever.
That is not correct.
Got you.